Okay, I'd like to call the order to the meeting of the White Lake Township Library Board. At six forty-six.
Six forty-six, that sound right?
That sounds good.
By December fifteenth. For the recording. All right. Does everybody want to stand for the pledge of allegiance or applause here? All right. So Karen, do you do roll call?
I do do roll call for you.
Thanks for filling in.
You're welcome.
Secretary today, I appreciate that.
Um, roll call President Jennifer Schultz.
Here.
Uh Treasurer Gwendolyn Newton.
Here.
Trustees Karen Wines here. Uh Eric Shotwell.
Here.
And Harry Francis.
Here.
And we have Vice President Richard McGlue absent excuse.
Yes.
We also have in attendance Director April Stevenson and Assistant Director. Amy Rosen.
All right, can I get someone to approve the agenda?
A motion to approve the agenda is written.
I'll second that. All in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
So we've got four eyes. Okay. Well, we have room for public comments now. Yes, Mary. You, when you, if you make a comment, you have to identify yourself. And come on up here.
Good evening. Mary Erwin five nine two five kind of rich for. White. As business managers. And Treasurer of our Homeowners Association and Hidden Pines. We're well aware fiduciary responsibilities with others' money. Also as advocates for and supporters of the library. Um, we are helping to represent them. During the proposal time, we helped send out postcards. We put up and removed signs. We handed out literature at our polling site. And we attended both library and township meetings. Uh Jen and Rich were the only two current board members who were there and Amy was around then. Um, we were able to donate twenty-five hundred dollars to the building fund. Because we felt it was important. And I'm not sure that our five children and sixteen grandchildren and two great grandchildren appreciated it. But eventually they will in their own areas where they live. Uh, we also spoke at the library meeting that was held at Lakeland High School and supported the new library. After the library was completed and the meetings resumed here. Uh, we donated another five hundred dollars to Denise for class. Two of which are in this room. Uh, we both donated and purchased at the Derby Day fundraiser event. And um during the promotion and there was a lot of it during the um building. Um. The uh library was given a lot of things that they had to do and that they had to pay for. One of the items was a road um project. And the township supervisor was able to get an agreement with Road Commission of Oakland County. To knock off a hundred thousand dollars because it was a project that would eventually be involved with citizens there. Um, the library will soon have new neighbors. You're going to benefit from that because there'll be more people coming, there'll be bicycle and walking paths. There'll be sidewalks. Um, you'll have access to a bus stop and all of that would be part of the civic center, so you'll be um able to take advantage of all that. It's our opinion that what's good for the library is good for the township. What's good for the township is good for the library. Um, the small portion of any future tax increments will help and be benefited through all. So we're asking you. Please vote to opt in on the top on the tip plan, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else? No, okay. So we've got some of our township representatives here to talk about the tip plan. So it's your turn to have the floor. We're trying to keep the presentation to about fifteen minutes. And there'll be ten minutes later for questions for anybody that have questions for the township.
So while we're getting set here, good evening, thank you for having us on township trustee Elizabeth, as you know, I'm your library liaison. Joining me tonight is our delegation here to your board, Treasurer Mike Roman, Treasurer Angie Andrea Voorhees, our consultant Dick Carlisle. Um, our assessor Dave Heber, Rebecca, um, and actually development director Sean. So we have an option for you, I know that you were giving a presentation um by our consultant Mr. Carlisle a couple months ago. We can highlight a couple of points if you'd like, just to replay five ten minutes. Or we can just dive into the conversation, do you have any preference?
I would like to get an overview because our board member Karen and myself would not act that way.
Then I'm gonna turn over for my email sister. Uh, and Sean.
So hello to those of you who are here and met, I'm Sean O'Neill, I'm sorry I couldn't make it, I go where I was sick and I I know that you guys wanted to hear the presentation and I hope you received my email after the fact, but uh. Um, I happen to be here with you tonight, Dick Carlisle is our consultant who has spent many years, I don't wanna say how many, uh doing uh corner improvement authority and DDA type uh work for communities all over Michigan and. So we saw his expertise when the township decided to kind of revitalize the corner of movement authority that was first established in two thousand and six. Uh, but we never moved ahead with the tax capture plan at that time, so sort of half in and half out, so. What we've done this year was move forward with the development and tip or taxing from financing's plan. And that is what I think Dick spoke to you about a couple of months ago, that is what the township board considered on the twenty-eighth of last month. And that is what is out for public distribution to all the taxing jurisdictions, including the library. Uh, what is unique is what's the viewer, you all probably know is that um many of our taxing jurisdiction partners, Oakland County, Oakland County Parks, Oakland County Transit. I currently Metro Authority and the Oakland County Community College are opted in unless they opt out. State law dictates that libraries are opted out unless they opt in. So our conversation with you is sort of the opposite conversation we're having with so these other entities they are in. And we're presenting to them and asking them to stay in and for you, we're here tonight to explain more about our process and program. Uh, maybe what a quarter on movement authority is and ask you to consider opting in.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You should be on the air, I'll sure. Okay. Yeah, I'm gonna really try to go through and I don't wanna give any, any of this um. Not the attention it deserves, so if. If anybody needs further explanation on anything, please interrupt me and we'll go there. Uh, I think Sean gave a pretty good overview, the township started this in two thousand and six and decided at that point in time not to move forward. Uh, they, this current board uh decided that uh it's it's time to resurrect this. Some of the development activity and then some of the infrastructure needs of the township in the in the M fifty-nine corridor. Uh, they thought it was important. These are specifically, this, you know, a corner improvement authority is an economic development organization that's specifically established to uh. Implement pro- uh programs and projects that will stimulate private investment. And uh, once private investment occurs. Through the public investment obviously has an increase in taxable value. Which benefits all taxing organizations, so it's really one of the uh. Tax increment finance. Financing tool is one of the human local government has where they're able to take tax uh to use taxing uh dollars from other taxing jurisdictions. To invest directly in their community to benefit and to simulate economic development that ultimately increases. Rises, it raises the level of investment uh taxable uh taxable values for all jurisdictions. Uh, the boundaries were the same, I think I showed this to the board uh in previous. Presentation, you know, it is essentially M fifty-nine and some of the major uh roads that can walk with us such as, I don't know, Elizabeth and Clay Road. Uh, while this is a sum up of a large district, I think as you'll see as I go on, we've taken a fairly conservative approach regarding the actual tax capture. So this is the one that's called actually the development area. And this will ultimately become the tax increment finance district also.
Where's the library in that? Like Chrome Bridge and all of that?
So yeah, it's right here.
Thank you. So it, you know, it is governed by a board, which is a five-person board, supervisor and uh. Four other members, three of which have some type of business districts in the district. And one that, one member must be a resident or live one half mile from the district. The board. Go ahead, by the way, we have board members that are three, three board members that are out here.
Sure, I I'll, I'll do it, uh, on the right is Rick Walkle, he is the chair, Debbie Linus is the vice chair and Tony Madaffar is a member of the corner of putting up door.
Right, so they've been appointed and their primary, their their first responsibility was to assist in preparing and development and taxing and finance plan, which they did. With our assistance, uh, and recommended that plan. To the uh, to the township board. CIA board does not have unlimited authority, the township board has uh has oversight authority in a couple of different ways, one, they appoint the members of the board. Two, supervisor is a member of the board and three, the township board approves the CIA's annual budget. Um, if the CIA wants to pursue any type of power, they they do so with the the pledge of full faith, the credit of the township. And that must be approved by the township board, so. CIA's authority is not, you know, unregulated by the township board, it really is an arm of the township board government. Uh, so how does the CIA raise funds? I wanna just emphasize that TIF is only one component. Tax increment finance, it is only one component of the board's uh ability to raise money, they can apply the grants and get donations. Uh, they can ensure credit uh donations, they can pursue other grants from the state, through the federal government. Uh, taxing and financing is a means to provide essentially some seed money to leverage other sources of fund. How it works is that once this plan is adopted, which it has been now by the township board. We established two thousand twenty-three as the base year. And thereafter, any increases in the uh, in the taxable value is that. You know, either all or a portion of that is captured by a tax increment finance authority. In this case, we'll see that uh. White Lake Township proposes to capture only thirty-five percent of the incremental tax value. What this means, and I'll show you in a minute, uh, all the taxing jurisdictions include. Uh, all Oakland County, you're including Metro, Oakland County Community College. If the library board chooses to opt in. Uh, it would include the library board. We've estimated with the total. The amount of tax increment funding over a twenty-year period is if all taxing jurisdictions jurisdictions stand is approximately twelve million.
It's over twenty years.
Twenty years.
Over twenty years.
Let me say that. This is, is an estimate, I I've done this for many, many years. We come up with the best and most conservative estimates we can. And things happen in the economy. Sometimes things will bound me, sometimes things go off. Uh, and you know, in another unexpected manner, so there's no way that we can predict. What happens, you know, ten years from now from that standpoint. Uh, but this is our best guess based on historical averages in the township in terms of increases in taxable value, and this is why we have. You know, you have an expert, an assessor in in Dave Heber who who understands and knows these things. So we've tried to come up with a realistic but uh conservative estimate of what the taxable. How the taxable values and your incremental increase will be. So now, what happens now is that this project had, this plan has been approved by the board. And there's a sixty-day period where taxing jurisdictions can opt out. In your case, by legislation, you're already opted out, so you can opt in. If you so choose. Or you can wait if you so choose, or you can never opt in if you so choose. But you could also opt in with certain conventions that might try to be more acceptable to you as a board and I think that's obviously something. Uh, discussion, but that's purely your decision. So when I talk about the uh incremental increases. This is the base value and these are just theoretically, but essentially view this as what the current. Base tax revenue that you are currently receiving, you will always continue to receive what you're currently receiving. You will never not get back. Okay, that's established as your base tax revenue. So this is the total increases of taxable value. Should the incremental, should the investments that are made in. The tax increment district turn out to be true and successful. Sixty-five percent of the increase in tax revenue over the base tax uh taxable value. Is kept by the taxing jurisdictions. Thirty-five percent will be what is captured by the TIF. This is. In my experience, it is usually low amount of tax capture, usually sitting worth of fifty, sometimes up to a hundred percent. Captureable value, but because of the size of the district. And. The ability to try to encourage other taxing jurisdictions to look at at this as a partnership. The township made a conscious decision. To to capture, you know, to propose a capture of thirty-five percent. So. What this means is, is that. If it, if, if the growth does not occur. As the township anticipates it will. Then. That thirty-five percent capture is not going to be what we project. Nor is your sixty-five percent increase going to be what it is projected to be also. This stays the same. However.
Yes, you might ask, is that really stayed the same with the head again? I mean.
Dave?
I'll hold the rest of my question. Probably do the after questions, but I.
It is a good question. The, the taxable value will increase. Which is governed by the proposal A, which is the rate of inflation of five percent whichever is less than any of the new growth, so new development is is what we're anticipating. Along with increases in, in just regular market activity, you know, I, the property value is just going up. What heavily does is it reduces the tax rate, so you have to roll your tax revenue back based on the increases of value outside of new construction. Over and above the CPI, I know, and I know it's confusing, but you'll get all the new growth new to the, to the library. From new buildings, new constructions, any of the projects that we can put together with this plan and if, and the, all the tax rate rates will be rolled back based on however, whether it's throughout the plan. Whether it's the township, police, fire, the only thing that does, isn't subject to roll back is your debt knowledge, but the debt knowledge is not even in our, our roles in through capture. Does that make sense of answer your?
Yes, Dave, so really, so any, I mean, any losses as a result heavily are would be offset by the growth.
And there, yes.
That's correct, if there is growth. Now, if we have a major recession. You know. We're all, you know, we're all have a problem, so anyway, I mean, this is the scenario that we are presenting to you as well as the other taxing jurisdictions. That. As a result of the investment, the public investments that are proposed in this district. They are intended. And historically in most tax increment districts, and proving to be the case. Are, you know, stimulating private investment so that this type of scenario where. You know, with this, this investment in infrastructure. Everybody's growth in tax revenue becomes greater as a result of the investments in public infrastructures. But that is essentially what. You know, the whole concept behind taxing, now obviously, if, if we were presenting a hundred percent tax, tax capture. You know, my argument would be pretty hollow in that standpoint. But, but actually, I mean, this is, is the smaller portion of the capture. Uh, while all the taxing jurisdictions were, I think it's thirty-five percent of the tax, of the tax capture as a result of the growth in the, in the corridor. Um. It's only, the dollar can only be spent in the district of which the library is part of that. And uh. You know, some of the questions we get from the general public is does it involve increasing taxes in the CIA area? No, it is not. The taxes only increase by any authorization of the township or for whatever purposes they decide to be, but. Essentially, the, the authority does not have any effect on increasing taxes. And I think at the last meeting, we presented the whole array of projects and. Programs, one of the things that. The CIA board wants is is proposing to do, the really, really, the M fifty-nine. Well, right, how many people commented that? Between the neighboring jurisdictions, you don't know the difference between the media and what like township, believe it. Uh, so essentially branding, entryway signage. Uh, in an, in an attempt to try to, and actually, when I talk about this, waste finding signage to direct people off of them to, to the library. Is one of the components of this plan.
We are, we're already on that. So what, what do you think?
Well, I don't, we don't have a specific, you know, I'm saying.
We didn't do it in like the last. Fourth, yeah, it's been like a big one, that we just did a signage on M fifty-nine for the library.
Okay, I, you know.
So we're just, one awesome, awesome thing would be doing.
Okay.
For that signage, you may not have that kind of, yeah.
I, I don't, and none, none of this is, is detail at this point. Um, streetscape improvements along both M fifty-nine and all side roads of the Travis District such as Elizabeth Lake Major Roads. Pathway extensions, right now, uh. The uh pathway system is really a hodgepodge, paved shoulder pathways, mayor is not safe. Um, clear desire of part of the CIA or the township board to make. This area a lot more walkable. Traffic safety improvements, many of the major intersections uh along the, you know, along the entire corridor, we need to have some type of upgrades. Uh, capacity, access management. In order to control traffic, reduce crashes and improve uh. The functioning of traffic along M fifty-nine, especially as enters into these major side roads. Uh, transit is a part of this, this program uh. The township, the, the space of Woda. Uh, I mean, it's talking about a smart dust line along M fifty-nines. And so constantly, part of the CIA plan is to uh, is to prepare uh improved transit stops. And make transit more attractive throughout the entire district. Uh, build some basic utility improvements, there's some gaps in sewer and water pressures problem throughout the district. Uh, and then there's some economic development assistance to specific businesses. And finally, some of these programs will involve property easement and acquisition, so uh. The number of these uh. John, you want to speak English specifically about some of these projects, how these specific?
Yeah, there are, well, there are a few, right, kids, we're coming here, we're saying, we're doing all of these things, you're saying, well, how's the sewer line three miles away benefit us? I think the purpose of these, and I, I am not an expert at this, I'm learning as we go, is to increase uh, make improvements in the corridor, to increase, increase the value of the corridor. And the surrounding areas and therefore, at the end of the process, return to all the taxing jurisdictions property that is now more valuable and has had. You know, seen an increase in value as a result of all of this investment to where. A lot of the benefits that may not be tangible, things you can hold in your hand during that period of time when there's a capture. You start to realize the benefit of the increase in value of, you know, the district of that property, so. Um, some of the projects that may either directly or indirectly, I would say, involve or improve or benefit the library would be, I think this is early mentioned. You know, some road improvements, uh, things that were kind of pulled off uh from a couple of years ago that can now be taken care of and checked off the county's list. Uh, another uh, road project would be onsite and offsite pathway improvements, if you tried to walk down M fifty-nine. Uh, if you've got a good pair of high tops that you laced up real tight because you're gonna roll an ankle, it's just really rough, so. Not just here in the vicinity of the library, but all along the corridor, making improvements for those pathways. Uh, linking the library to the civic center property, to the park, private property behind us. Uh, with a pathway system, that's probably the most tangible, direct benefit that you can hold in your hand, I don't have an exact price on that, but.
I thought there was a grant that Mr. Colom did.
That's for the road, yes.
No, but it include pathways that included the library.
It doesn't. No, the, the grant that was approved, the grant that we're talking about, the federal grant uh is for the reconstruction of Elizabeth Lake Road.
Okay, I thought there was specific pathways and, and he had come to the library and asked the library to, to, that if we wanted to be part of that. That time that grant was, that grant process happened, I thought that the library was included in that pathway.
So, so to be clear, there's a couple of grants, we've gotten a lot of grants lately, um, the road project involves the pathways adjacent to Elizabeth Lake Road, so. There'll be pathway on either side of Elizabeth when it's reconstructed, with some on-street parking, street skating, street lighting, things like that. From the library's frontage all the way down to the park basically. Um, there is a triangle trail which we received Ralph Wilson's grant for designing, fifty thousand dollar grant for the design, which will create. Uh, I guess a connection with the pathway down Elizabeth of Taggartiner across fifty-nine, that's probably a seven hundred and fifty thousand dollar project in phase one is supposed to begin in twenty twenty-four to at least complete. The Elizabeth frontage portion of that, and then the other trail that we're talking about is the one that's onsite off the road. It will start basically, let's say at the library on public property, runs through the civic centers, public property, running down to Stanley Park into the lake, into the lakefront. And that's another pathway network that would all be kind of connected together, so a lot of pathways, a lot of grants, different properties. Uh, different funding sources, uh, and then if from property to the west, when the property in the west develops, uh, there'd be opportunity to link. All of our sites to that property as well, so folks who are maybe, let's say, living there or have access.
I'll say that we'll go back to our records because I do specifically remember a project that Mr. Colom asked us to. And that, it wasn't very recent.
I think that was the grant for, I received a message from uh someone involved with the library previously today and they mentioned that. Uh, there was a letter sent on behalf of a grant request for Stanley Park, and so that is maybe what.
Yeah, I think that's what we're all talking about.
Yeah, um, so, so that would be uh to create, uh, and, and obviously that, those grand dollars for Stanley Park can only be spent. Those are state trust.
Our understanding was it included those pathways to the library.
That, that, that grant cannot, it can't leave the property, it can't even, it can't even link to township hall, but there possibly were some other. There, again, there are so, there's three different grants that I've mentioned, one from uh, one from a Ralph Wilson grant, private grantee. One from the state of Michigan and one from the federal government, so I'm not, I guess.
Does this include the grant that, that, the Parkinson Rec? Um, was awarded several years ago and then they came to the, to the township um citizens and asked us in there, and I know it was passed, it was certainly after I went into the. Community and it was specifically for walkway and bike and, and walking path. And then I know that it didn't happen because I didn't want to expand what the federal government wanted um widthwise down M fifty-nine. So does the monies from that project, is that included in this?
So do you mean millage or do you mean?
It was a millage and we have, we have. It was a millage, and we have, and we approved the millage several years ago, and those pathways didn't take place.
So.
And I went to several of those, those Parks and Rec meetings at that time, and they said, wow, we really don't want to do it this time. Because that grant money that we received, uh, in, is requiring us to have a wider path than what we want to do.
So there was previously a federal grant or pathway of maybe a hundred and fifty thousand dollars, that money was used down, uh, in front of the church that's adjacent to, but between Home Depot and Lowe's. To pass the bridge there, so those funds were used. Uh, the problem is, is when you start throwing out words like sidewalk and pathway.
It, this was specifically bike walking path, that, that there was a millage down.
So many years ago.
Probably two thousand, forty thousand, between two thousand and five and two thousand and ten, that millage.
Yeah, there've been a couple of millages, and they've all had language in them that involve pathways, pathways are a million dollars a mile. Uh, to build, and, uh, that, that grant collects, so that, that millage collects less than a half a million dollars a year. So to do a couple of miles of pathway, we would have to save the entire six years of. The, uh. The millage to be able to do a very limited number of pathways, so that's really been the challenge, is there isn't really, I think it's about three tenths of a mill, and it's all Parks Committee has coming in, so. That's been more for infill, we've used that more for infill, in mashing of grant funds, um, acquiring Stanley Park was a pretty huge deal for the folks in this area, because. Um, it protected from development, very critical piece of property, and so that's one of the, in their, uh, master planning process, one of the focal. Priorities, and that was some of the feedback we got from the residents as well during that process, and so that's one of the things that, yeah, we went after. You know, it was a, a matching bunch for that, that grant to purchase that property, so as far as priorities go, uh, that really would be something I have to bring. The Parks and Rec group in to kind of discuss that, but I know as I said before, they do have a desire to fix up the pathways, but they don't. They just don't get the funds in through that small millage to do meaningful large projects, so it's been more infill. But, uh.
Explaining a grant match, specifically what that means, because we have to use our tax revenue.
Uh, right, ev- every grant, and I do properly divide for grants as well, when you make that application, there's usually a minimum match required, so if they're asking for a hundred thousand dollar grant, there's a twenty percent match. The money has to come from somewhere else, generally, uh, a general fund, uh, not necessarily another granting source, so, uh. All the projects that we've done recently, uh, we've been able to find even for design or construction, potentially both, a source of funding, uh, grant wise, and. Uh, it's allowed to stretch the township's dollars a little further, and that's, I think, what Dick was mentioning, uh, just a few minutes ago in his presentation. We're talking about a capture amount that really pales in comparison to all of the expenses and costs that we would incur trying to undertake all these projects, so. We're leveraging these funds in order to do that grant mashing, we have many of them, uh, require fifty percent match, if you're doing a two million dollar project, it sounds like it's a big project, but you still gotta come to the plate with a million dollars, so. That is one of the key ways that we're going to seek to complete many of the items on our checklist here, and the way we really operated for. I've been with the township for twenty years, I was teasing you about being old and, but, uh, you know, I, it, it's, uh, it's, it's something that we always try to do, is to stretch a dollar as far as we can, it's just one less dollar we have to ask the residents for, one less thing we have to put off.
You know, the, the other thing is, I mean, and I, and I realized that, you know, we're asking the. The library to opt in to this particular, you know. Uh, program. But we're also asking other taxing jurisdictions to, that are not within the township. To opt in in order to, you know, long-term, that, you know, benefit their ultimate taxable values. On the other hand, it's the only, uh. Taxary financing is the only tool that I'm aware of, where, where we are actually able to recapture. Tax dollars that are being paid out to other taxing jurisdictions and reinvest them back in the community.
Okay, well, we're at, we're over our fifteen minutes, but we have, so, um. I guess you had mentioned two things that I wanted to ask a question about, and that you can opt in with conditions.
Yes.
You can opt in later on. Can you opt out?
You're already opted out.
I mean, we're, we're, if you want to, or something, can you opt out, like, like. If there's a recession.
Um, my, my advice would be to go to township and to you in that regard. Is to create, you know, to do this by agreement. So that if you do opt in, and there are certain conditions that. Are, uh, or certain circumstances that occur. That affect your continued ability to, uh, allow thirty-five percent of the tax, uh, the increase to be captured. That there would be conditions in an agreement that would be essentially a contract, so. Yeah, we've done this many times, it can be, it can be done in a number of different ways, it could be just certain, a cap. On the total amount of tax, taxes captured. It could be, uh. A time period. Uh, I mean, there's a variety of different ways that it can be kind of done, I mean, I think. It, it would be, it would be, it could be tailored to meet the condition means of the library or certain circumstances that would cause. You to, um, need to opt out, so, it, it, you know. All this can be done by agreement, which is essentially a contract.
Okay, and you had mentioned that some of the, your other places of funding were like, of like, uh, then using stuff like that, so what if. You had a specific thing that benefited the library, like paths or something? Could we donate, uh, uh, on a, um. As needed for a certain project's basis? Rather than being tied into this, because we're a very low-income library and, um.
Well, again.
And right, and right now.
Yeah, I mean, I mean, I think if, if you were to identify the projects that are beneficial to you.
Well, uh, with the project setting.
Yes.
As you're fleshing out.
Again, you know. Because you are already opted out.
Yeah.
I mean.
I understand, and I understand.
Any ability.
You wanna build the community and all that, but, and also. This may have come up last time, if also, we did that looped water line, which was over three hundred thousand dollars that we hadn't planned on, and that helps the whole area. You know, and there was, um. You know, I don't know that the township offices now that are using our old building. If that's part of this corridor improvement part, is then, then, you know, we contributed with that too, we, we didn't buy the building, so, you know. As, as my very, with a very low budget, we contributed a lot already.
Right.
Which may have come up in the last meeting, I wasn't there. But, I mean, I, I also understand that it'll benefit from some things, but I think we're opted out for a reason, is that we don't have much income.
Well, you're opted out because of legislation, yeah. The legislature put it in.
I understand, so I understand that.
Yeah. Um, so. But let me just say that.
Okay.
Anything can be done by agreement.
I understand.
Okay.
But we can opt out now, and then, but we don't have to opt, because we're on the, just say. Why are we on the bill, and, and why are we on the document anyway, we're supposed to be on the.
Well, because every taxing jurisdiction that is potentially captured was in the document. Statutorily.
It's a projection.
It's a projection, and statutorily, you are.
Everyone opted in as a capture.
Statutorily, you are, uh, by, you know, are, are automatically opted out, the other taxing jurisdictions, statutorily. Uh, have to opt out. So by the time the sixty-day period is ending, whoever's in or out will be included in the document, so if you're opted out after sixty days, I mean, you can be to be opted out. You're out.
When is sixty days?
Or me.
When is that?
I think it's January twenty-fifth, yeah, I think it's six.
We have a board meeting again on the fourth, where I don't, I miss this window.
Sure.
And I need to know if we need a special meeting.
Well, no, I think you can, you can negative say it in one day, like, or, yeah.
Could, well, we, I mean, I think simply keeping the lines of communication open. You know, take more time, I mean, you're, you are automatically opted out.
Okay.
The thing is, is that. I, I will tell you, again, I'm just telling you this from experience, that. If, if. If you are. Uh, if there are some elements of this that you are willing to opt in for. The timing, I think, would be, uh, would be appropriate, it would, this is all pre in everybody's mind.
Okay.
Instead of waiting five years down the road, for example. To enter into an agreement, uh. Plus the fact, five years down the road from now. Your tax capture is probably five times more, or something like that, maybe not part of that much, but several times more than what it is right now. So, I mean, what I'm suggesting is, is that in your particular case. Because you, we are asking you to opt in, you know, we're not telling you to rush this decision, we're not asking you to rush this decision. But the fact of the matter is, I think it's gonna be a lot easier to develop an agreement right now, with this is purely. Everybody's top priority and everything else, and if you need more time, take it. I mean, you're, you're all, we're all very secure folks, I mean, we really are, you're statutorily, you're opted out.
So I'm gonna pause there for a minute and ask just for sixty seconds of your time to go through my list, and then I hope, um, Senator Roman would just like a minute either.
Thirty seconds.
No, thirty seconds.
Let me get that.
So Sean went over many of the things, but why I'm here firstly is I'm a firm believer that information forms knowledge and knowledge forms understanding. So we want to understand, we're here to, um, just, just open up the dialogue, have a conversation, start the conversation and answer any questions. Then you, your board will decide. Um, but Sean talks about the things that would benefit you that are right in line with your strategic plan. Are your internal pathways, your external pathways, the transit stock, with the Woda and the condition of those play roads and the heat of the heat of those play roads important to the library. When we plan this library, we plan just to be a heart and a hub of the community, I need you to join the community. So this is a community project, so I encourage you to opt in. Um, it's not about the money, it's not about things past, I can tell that you've talked to a source that's not intimately involved.
No, I'm just, that was my own personal observation, is that we've done things to improve this area already.
Yeah, of course.
Okay.
But there's more, and you know, the plans and the dreams are always more, right? So this is a mechanism for you to accomplish some of those things, uh, to accomplish some of the things in your strategic plan. Um, and. I think I covered, I think the, the fellows actually covered most of what I was gonna say, but, you know, this location was chosen to be on N fifty-nine, but to be reachable. So you gotta, you know, this is again, we need to, to. Get people here to the library, connect the greenbelt, connect the path from Stanley Park Civic Center to here to fifty-nine to other parks. That's huge for your.
I understand that, but it. The part I have trouble with, and, and I had been involved in the earlier discussion, is that why is the library paying for infrastructure? You know, why, it seems to me that's something the township does.
But we wouldn't pay for it on your property. We wouldn't pay for it on your property.
Uh.
So this is, this is, this would go to your property, the pathways and the sidewalks on library property, maybe it's beautiful pathways to, to pay you.
Why?
Back to the property.
And what you're asking the library for, this three quarters, we don't know. Pathways are not gonna cost us that.
You have a choice.
We made the choice to build those pathways, it wouldn't cost us.
But if you have a choice, you potentially can opt in for half, for three quarters, or a quarter, you don't have to do very, like, a grand, that's the board decision, I mean, there are other. This is, don't like.
And I think that's why Jen asked you, we could opt into specific project.
Well, but like you talked about, I mean, what I would suggest, if you guys are interested at all, it's the form, maybe a subcommittee to meet with our delegation, where we can really get into like the nitty-gritty and have some conversation. So, that's all I have to mention.
You got thirty seconds.
Starting.
Coming like, oh, okay, so, uh, I asked myself how I would vote on this if I were in your shoes, okay? So if I were in your shoes, I would opt out as presented, I think thirty-five percent is too much money for the library to give up. Okay, it probably don't wanna hear that from me, but I'm giving you my own view, however. I think it would benefit you guys greatly in the future for some kind of relationship with this improvement authority. Okay, come up with some number that you are comfortable with, I guarantee it will benefit you in the future. You and us, we don't know what future infrastructure needs you're gonna have, if tomorrow the governor requires you to put electronic charging stations up for electric vehicles. The CIA can help you big time, so, um, I think that relationship will go a long way. And thanks for letting us present, you guys.
So, does everything have to be settled within the sixty days?
If you were opting out, it would be, but in your case, if it does not.
You know, you, you have, you have plenty of time, I, 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 the only reason I recommend is to try to, if, if there is. Agreement to be reached and benefit to be derived by the library, it's best rules, wouldn't, it's fresh arrow's mind, so. Sixty days is not, with you, is not hard and fast.
So then who was our contact being to talk about stuff and?
I'm happy to, to help to continue the dialogue in whichever way we want, uh, to move ahead, and I think that it makes sense to. To take your time, I think, I mean, I agree with everything that Mike said, I would totally do. You know, I didn't, we didn't come here saying. Yeah, thirty-five percent are boss, it was, this is what we're asking everybody to do, or we should kind of just, yeah, present a thirty-five across the board, and, uh. You know, understand, not everyone would necessarily be okay with that, so.
It's just on the increase.
That's correct, so if you're getting a million dollars now. You get your million dollars, if another million dollars is added tomorrow, you'll get six hundred and fifty thousand, and the corridor improvement authority gets three hundred and fifty thousand from that.
Or I could get.
Or whatever amount, whatever, right, and, and I think that, yeah, we, we keep talking about percentages, because that's how the council lets us present it, they're really steering the ship on this, they're the biggest piece of the property, they're about half of that hour amount that was projected, twelve million dollars, so. Uh, what's easiest to say, listen, forget about the percentage, we're in for this number of dollars. At thirty-five percent a year, or twenty-five percent a year, however that math works out, and it just goes, and I, you know, you guys asked the question about opting into certain projects, I think that becomes difficult, because. We don't have a project schedule, in the first year, if you look at the projections, we aren't even capturing thirty thousand dollars, it's gonna be, you know, four or five years, and four significant funds coming in where we can actually match.
And so it would be, it would fit our model to do that. If you knew, if you knew now what was going on in twenty twenty-four, we could, um, make it a line item, I don't know about you, but.
And I guess what I'm, what I'm saying is, is if you just say, you know, forget it, forget about a project, uh, that, that becomes complicated. Uh, you just say, we're comfortable with the dollar, two hundred thousand dollars, let's just pick a number, then it just goes, and you know that the first two hundred thousand dollars of the capture goes to CIA, and then it goes back to a hundred percent. From sixty-five back to a hundred percent, whatever day that happens, five years, and seven years, and ten years, goes away.
So that's your total lump sum, you're saying?
You, yeah, and I think that's probably the easiest, is to say, this is a lump sum total that, that we are comfortable with, and would opt in for, and then the agreement, like Dick mentioned, goes from there. You guys work it out with us, your board.
Could you say not to exceed twenty thousand a year or something like that?
Uh, you, you don't get to that point for a while.
Yeah.
Yes, you, 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 you could.
I don't wanna do all two hundred thousand dollars in one year.
Yeah, and the math gets a little wonky, where, let's say that amount's good, but the way the cap is every year pushes it out past the twenty years, I don't know how that works either. Uh, but, but that's something we can, we can work on.
Okay.
So.
Can I get, like, um, the last ten years' worth of value increases?
I think we have the projection.
Yeah, it's, it is your plan, we can, we can get those.
Not a projection, but backwards.
Yes, oh, okay.
Is your request for the attorney's township, boy, wait, or just the district yourself or?
Just my, just me, you know.
No, he's saying what? Over in just one, that's for.
I guess, I guess my number is the whole township.
Right, you, you would collect on the whole township, yeah, I can break it down both ways, and then come out and sit down and explain it with you and staff, with however you want to.
I'd appreciate that.
So Jen, or April, or any of you, um, hopefully you all have my email address, um, from my email a couple months back, but, uh, let me know.
Okay.
And we'll get together whenever we need to.
We're all happy to talk, we're all happy to need more, uh, okay, working on it for sure, yeah.
We just appreciate your time.
Yeah, thank you. Appreciate it. All right, so let's move on to approval of the minutes. I knew that we approved the November fifteenth, twenty twenty-three regular meeting minutes as presented.
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Right. My officers' report, I will just say.
My officers' report, I will just say. Happy holidays to everybody. I think Hanukkah is over in a day or two. Our Hanukkah represent, to confirm that, and, uh, there's other holidays coming up. And, uh, Carrie, I wanted to thank you officially for becoming part of the board. I know you're all sworn in and everything and.
I am, thank you.
We're just glad to have you on the team.
Very much so, okay, thank you.
I'm glad to be here, thank you.
All right, and, uh, that's basically all I had. Rich isn't here for vice president's report. Karen, did you have anything?
I did.
Go.
Um, a thank you note has been sent to the friends of the library on behalf of the board for their generous donation.
Oh, very nice. Thank you, Karen. The check.
What?
That check that we saw?
Yes, for that.
Thirty thousand dollars?
For that being, for the being.
Yeah, the big check that we're all so happy about.
I saw the card, it was really nice.
Well, thank you for taking care of that. Did you take care of that?
I did.
Thank you.
I got all about it and then I remembered.
I'm sorry I'm eating, but I got up at seven thirty. I've been at work all day and haven't eaten and my blood sugar is just getting.
Okay, so.
Okay, actually. All right, am I next?
You're up.
You're in treasure.
Okay.
So, um, I have two things. One, um, let's talk first about. The ordinary, you know, balance monthly, um, and if, and, um. Carrie's probably is pretty new to this, so Carrie, at some point in the future, if you wanna sit down, I'd be glad to sit down with you and go through this with, with April. Okay, and that, and that we can go through it and we can explain to you how, eh, how this budget works and, um. You know, and what kind of paperwork we get from our accountant every month. So what we do at this point too, though, is that we, you know, look through the accounts payable, we look at what money that we have spent in the last month. Um, and then, um, if there isn't any questions, um. One second, I will. Uh, make a motion. Cause I'm gonna present the bills, financial statements and bills, and I'll make a motion to accept the bills for payment as presented. If there's no questions. But I'm gonna give Carrie a moment to look through this, since she's not looked at it before. Actually, we have checks assigned today? Probably did, because, thank you. I would, I mean, that we did.
An HCH detail.
Um, there was a, an HCH rejection, what was?
Yeah, that was, um, at the end of the year, the, the staff that did not make health insurance got a stipend.
Right.
So that is what cost fat for kids to learn.
Okay, that's what that was about. I mean, you rejected it, I'm like, what is this about?
No, I said, I said to go, yeah, I said yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay.
Because they knew it was a one time a year.
Okay, that's right.
That's something we really have to go back and change or anything.
Okay. Any questions on the, on the bills? Okay, so.
I'll second that new motion then.
Okay, thank you. And then my other, um, item, and I will do an update on this a little bit, um, so my other item is, and we like to go carry on. Let you know, we have a lot of, of our monies we put in CDs because CDs, um, interest rate is so great right now. And, um, part of our policy is that we, um, invest in, in things that are, um, you know, in FDIC insured. As much as we possibly can. So at this point, it's very easy to do that. Um, and we try to keep our, our funding, um, in our investments right here in White Lake Township.
Okay.
Um, so we have, um, two credit unions and two banks in the, in the community that we use. Um, Chase and Flagstar. Flagstar is our primary bank and like, and Chase is our, um, our secondary. And then we use, um, Lake Michigan Credit Union and, um, Genesis also for investments. So we, um, take our tax dollars and we, and we roll it into these CDs, cause CDs pay so well right now. Um, and then we, we have them rolling and so then they come off and we move them into our checking account as needed. So when January, uh, the finance committee will make a decision on where those tax dollars are gonna go and how they're gonna flow throughout the year. Okay, so we, um, and we try to, we've gotten to the point, we got a little hairy with like three and six month CDs. We're trying to move more than twelve to thirteen month CDs, um, and then, um. What we're also trying to do is make sure if we have something coming up in, then in, um, two months from now. We're trying to actually, um, approve it at a, um, board meeting two months in advance. Because we never know if we don't have quorum and we don't wanna get to a point, like we have a CD coming up in February. We don't wanna be in the January meeting and not have quorum and there has to be a decision on that CD. So I'm trying to, and then I think, okay, if we don't have quorum two months in advance, hopefully we have quorum the following month, right? So this month, we have a CD that is coming to, um. Oh, I'm sorry, I just kept going, yeah, I just kept running going. Thank you, Erin.
You made the motion.
You, you made the motion, I seconded the motion.
Okay, I'll favor, sorry.
I, I apologize for getting ahead of myself.
I apologize for not.
Not paying attention, just, just let me ramble on.
Well, I realized where you're going, then I went with it, you're going a little too far.
So, um, if, if you look at the, um, balance sheet, this, the second page, and you expand it a little bit, our, um. Our accountant is great about showing where our investment summary is. We have a, um, CD at the very bottom, we had, we had a seven month CD for, um, Chase. And it expires on February twenty-sixth of twenty twenty-four. Um, Carrie, it's, it's on this page?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, so it's the very bottom of this page. You'll see there's, uh, um, the very last CD, okay, and it expires, um, in February. So, um, what I'd like to do with those monies, and it was two hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. I would like to actually just roll that over, so I'm going to make a motion to move the value. Of the Chase CD expiring February twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-four, plus to earn interest. Into a new Chase CD at a term of no less than six months and not to exceed fifteen months, depending on the interest rate. And we do that because we're looking at what the best interest rate is that we can get.
A second bit.
Okay.
On favor?
Aye.
Thank you. So the la, the CD that we just renewed in November, um, through Lake's Credit Union. Um, the interest on that, like, credit union, it expired, it was only four point two percent. It was a seven month CD. Um, we actually made a hundred, we made eight thousand, two hundred and eight dollars on it.
Nice.
Which was very nice. So we rolled all of that over at five and a quarter for thirteen months. Okay. Um, and I meant to look at this because we've done really, really well on, um, interest this year and then. I just wanted to. Where we have it, um, April.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
Um, so our income. Um, we've, from January to November. And that, and I don't know if this includes that November number or not, is thirty-eight thousand, four hundred and thirty dollars. So.
So do we only have three CDs right now?
Um, we, oh, you know, I'm, we renewed, um. We had two CD hours at Flagstar last month that rolled off as well. So one, we renewed. And, and we moved it just into Flagstar.
Okay.
Okay, so from November's meeting, we moved, um. Is that the one I wanted to talk about? We moved the money from the, uh, two hundred thousand dollar CD in November. It's in the, let's see. Hang on.
The Genesis one?
Where's my?
The reason I ask is because on this thing, there are only three that show a maturity date of twenty twenty-four. So is that?
Yeah, we, right now, right. Um, we, I'm sorry, I'm looking for my document on this. So we moved. We had two CD hours of two hundred thousand dollars apiece that expired also in November. We moved, um. Two hundred thousand dollars into the checking account and two hundred thousand dollars we moved out of a CDAR, and a CDAR is a CD that's reciprocal. Um, that, um, that Flagstar does for us, and we moved that into a straight Flagstar CD for twelve months. And I'm looking for, I just.
That's what I'm not seeing.
Um. Was that from November? So we must, we must have made that decision in October and hang on. Um. Yes, so it was in October, Karen. We, we, um, approved a motion to transfer a two hundred thousand CDAR plus interest from Flagstar that matures on twelve seven. Okay, that's coming up. Uh, well, it's come and gone, and that moved into the checking account.
Okay.
Okay, and we did that in October twenty-fifth, and then we did a motion to transfer the second, two thousand, hundred thousand CDAR plus interest. Um, from Flagstar that matures on twelve seven to a new twelve month Flagstar CD.
Okay, that's what I'm not seeing on, on this thing. Uh, why I'm asking?
Okay, no, that's a really good point, two and three. Go to the.
Because, um.
Is he twelve?
If you go to the bottom.
To the, all the way to the bottom.
A Flagstar.
A Flagstar, yes.
Then there's one that's coming up in March, but the two.
Yeah, but, but no, she's right, she's right, because there's a two hundred thousand dollar CD. This two hundred thousand dollar CD that expired on twelve seven, this, this date was eleven thirty, that's why, Karen. This is, this, the date and the top of this document is from eleven thirty.
Oh, okay.
And that's why it still shows those two Flagstar CDARS?
Oh, so the one that is twelve seven and twelve seven?
Yes.
Oh, okay.
Okay.
Those are the ones that have now.
They have now, one went to the checking account.
Okay.
Okay, so our next statement will show, um.
It was a twenty-four.
Yes.
Twenty twenty-four.
Okay.
Only one of them, cause the other one went to the checking.
So we'll have, um, we'll have a, um, a CDAR that expires, um, in March. Okay.
Mm-hmm.
And then we'll have the Chase one that ex, that expires in February.
Yeah, that's the one we just talked about.
We have a Genesis one that won't expire until.
December.
Until December, and that's the one that I thought the rate was gonna be five point zero three. But it's actually five point two five five, you said, yeah. Okay, so I'll talk to, um, actually, I should probably have that document in my, in my email today. They made, the bank made a little bit of an error and they fixed it for us.
Okay.
So. Yeah, okay, so, so actually, we have, we'll have quite a bit of money still in, um, CDs.
So we have a total of.
Four right now.
Okay.
Okay, and we will have more because all of our tax money is gonna be coming in.
Yeah.
Right, so, and, and some of them in, in next, in January, we may recommend that they're only six month CDs. We'll have to, we'll have to talk about it and, and the finance committee will figure out. And that's all I have for, um, for, um, pressure. And finance committee.
Okay. Director's report, April. Okay, um, just to share, just, I wanna go to the class. You know, if someone asks something, they need to put that out. I also put on your. Area there, the approved friends wishlist for twenty twenty-four, so.
Is, is something, is anything changed on this? Okay. Very nice.
Yeah, we're very excited about it. They're going to promote it to show what they are hosting library. So you'll expect to see this a little bit, um, around town. Um, some good things going on. We're finalizing the, getting, gonna be getting the lighting fixed finally, so that's. Took a while dealing with vendors, but that's gonna happen soon. Uh, strategic plan is launched and on the website and will soon, uh, have the print version of the marketing out and available. Just waiting on a couple of things with that. Um, just a few board opportunities, uh, Karen and I were both at the Fisk Farm Tree Lighting, which was a lot of fun. Seeing Santa and, um, working with them on these little ornaments. That was good. And then, uh, Jen and Karen, uh, were with me at the, um, Highland White Lake Business Association Coffee. Which was at the Community Sharing Outreach Center.
And they do a lot.
They do.
I was really impressed with everything.
They really do. Um, so that was, that was good and I appreciate you going. Uh, circulation, so we did have a circ- circulation clerk lead for a full-time position in Lansing. So congratulations to her, sad for us. Uh, but we did have a page who was interested. Uh, in that position, so we were able to fill it internally with that, um, young lady, and we're very happy about that. And so we'll be looking forward to it. Um, soon, uh, performance reviews are being written out. Uh, in the circulation services department, and so that's going well. Marketing's going really well. We're getting a lot overall. Uh, what we're noticing on social media is, it's, it's the videos. It's, it's so, so many people are so used to reels and TikTok, um, that we get the most views when we do a video. Um, and so it's, I, I think Heather's been doing a fabulous job with New Book Tuesday. Uh, we just, Maria printed out a beautiful, um. Print that actually was a three D print that prints out flat, and I don't know if you saw the video, but it rolls up. And you can put a little tea light candle in there.
Did she just do this?
Yesterday.
Oh, I haven't seen it.
Um, it's just, yeah, today, I don't remember when that was.
It was yesterday.
Yes, but it was, so we put it against, I, I said, put that on a rotating platform with a black background, cause it was just fabulous. Um, really just amazing and so, and we're also getting marketing going along those same lines of, um. Showing our prints with and putting little price tags on them, so people can kinda see what it would cost to print something of a certain size. But otherwise than that, marketing's going very well.
Can I ask a good question?
Yes, ma'am.
I sat and watched our, uh, messages on our board, electronic board. And I noticed it's all about. Day-to-day operations, and I didn't see anything talking about future programs. Is it because they're full or because?
We were very careful.
Right, so we're very careful.
Seasons or? Yeah, we're very careful with what we put on there because some things do fill up quickly. So, but if you do see, think that there's something that should be on there, um, just. Shouldn't you email or text us?
Thinking, we spent a lot of money on the sign, we wanna communicate with people and I think to run. See us on Facebook page and see us here and, you know. It's all pretty standard day-to-day stuff, nothing is exciting, so I don't know.
A little bit more programming.
How that interacts with you, but something about some kind of programming, like. Concerts and stuff where there's more people can be involved, you know? It's a lot to worry about that, but I don't, it doesn't have to be less day-to-day, because the stuff out there is important.
Yeah.
Or there's no, nothing to grab anybody's interest.
I think we drive past it every day and you see, see us on Facebook, you tend to ignore it.
Yeah, I, I, I'm gonna agree with that. I have one comment too, right before Thanksgiving, um. I was actually on the road and I'm like, oh, when's the library closed today? You know, it was the Wednesday before Thanksgiving and I thought, do we close at five? Because it's the day before Thanksgiving, do we close at eight? And, um, and I couldn't find it right when I looked at the website, like at two o'clock in the afternoon. It wasn't front and center. What was front and center was the coming, it was the, um, book sale coming up. So then I asked when I came in, I came in about four thirty and I was signing checks, I said, hey, when do we announce that we're gonna be closed for four days? Oh, five o'clock. Thinking, why wouldn't we be announcing that on the bulletin board? And, uh, uh, the message board and on our website, great big letters, don't forget to come and get your books, we're gonna be closed for four days. Right? It shouldn't really be several day, you know, like maybe Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday of Thanksgiving. Cause it's one of the longest times we're closed at once, and then you've got all these people that are like, oh my gosh, my kids are driving me nuts. Let's go to the library on Saturday morning, right, after Thanksgiving, and we're, and we're closed. So we really should play that up to get people to come in here on, on Wednesday, it, you know, Tuesday and Wednesday. I don't know what it takes to say, I'm not a marketing person, but it's.
They did business day of the year, right?
There was no one here, there was no, and, and people didn't know, a lot of people don't know we're closed for four days. So it's like, you know, we could really do it up and say, you know, come and get all your little crafts or whatever, and get your books for the, for the long weekend, so.
I'll double check and see.
Almost seems like a marketing campaign prior to a long weekend.
To an happening. Absolutely. Yeah, and so we don't, we're not, so I was told that we don't normally put out that we're being closed for an extended period of time. Till like five o'clock the day we're, before we're closing. Pardon?
People see clothes.
But.
Don't see.
But we don't have to word it that way, though, Amy, we could, it could be worded differently, like, don't forget to get your, and start with something really positive. You know.
For the holiday.
For the holiday weekend, and I started thinking about that, I thought, there's been a couple of times when my kids were little, I did get sort of caught in that, right? So, anyway, I just think we have an opportunity to really build it up and it, let people know, and so, you know, the Wednesday before Thanksgiving should be a happy place here.
I'll double check on it. I think something was small was done on social media, but certainly not.
But it was not front and center at two.
And we should do something more on the website, we're taking a banner, because we can do a banner.
Two o'clock in the afternoon, what came up for? Two o'clock in the afternoon, what came up first was the library book sale.
I agree with your point, though, but if it says closed, they see one word.
Right, and Amy's right, so we need to have something else saying, don't forget, you know, for your week, if your Thanksgiving weekend to pick up books.
Yes.
Yeah, something, something positive, right? Closed is right, probably right, is a negative. No, you're right. Anyway, that's my two cents.
Okay, so marketing going well, we'll double check on that. Um director connections, uh I've met with um.
Uh can I ask, what's the November Peach Jar flyer?
The Peach Jar goes to the schools.
Okay, thank you.
Parents uh can log into Peach Jar and pick the newsletters that they want to see.
Okay, okay. Thank you.
Uh okay, so I've met with um some new people, someone from Oakland eighty, I don't know if you're aware what Oakland eighty is, but it's a an initiative through Oakland County where they are trying to get free funds, I should say that loudly, free funds. Um for people twenty one years and older for community college. So if you're watching, pay attention. Um so we're gonna be working with them to get the word out on that. They're gonna have a table here during the blood drive. Um we're gonna work on maybe doing some sort of um program. Uh presentation for them, but uh just a nice partnership to get that word out there. Um I was able to meet with um Lake Michigan Credit Union for uh build a bank partnership meeting with them, maybe some educational programming. Uh maybe some sponsorship stuff. Uh attended the farm tree lighting, as I said, uh attended um Carrie Soreen, which was wonderful and nice. Yeah, for a board. Um and some webinars, Michigan Freedom Read Act, which was a good one, and continuing on with staff committee meetings. We are improving our process for room setups, especially in anticipation of helping staff members with programming, but also to anticipate uh when we are able to take more room reservations, we want to get that down. So we've been working with uh our facilities on that. Uh we also met with the new supervisor of our janitorial company to kind of review, you know, you know what, you're doing good here, we could see a little bit of improvement over here. Uh and our wonderful Christmas tree uh was set up, uh which was a nice donation by the Ray family.
It's very nice.
It's beautiful. And as you see on the lower part, when you first, when it first goes up, it kind of looks like there's nothing on the bottom, but that's because. The kids decorate ornaments and put it on there, so now.
And every time I've walked in here, there's a kid making an ornament.
Yeah.
It's really been fabulous.
They went really fast, so it was good. Uh we did have a wonderful book sale, and I did get those numbers. I didn't just attend the exec board meeting the other day. Their total income for the December holiday book sale was five thousand seven hundred and twenty two dollars and sixty cents. Make you aware that this was eleven hundred dollars more than last December's book sale.
Ah, nice.
Okay, nice.
A busy place.
So happy, yes.
I was out of town and missed it. It was very disappointing, and the, I want to say that the um marketing on that and the the um video was really cute.
The live.
Yeah, yeah, good job.
Thanks, Heather.
Yeah, she did a nice job.
Uh yeah, we got a lot of views on that. Yep, so again, the friends hosted the ornament decorating, um they are planning for their small art corner, which where the quilt. Was hanging, that is gonna be an art corner, they're going, look for stuff, information coming out about that for local artists. Uh in in the future, they wanted me to let you know that they're gonna start doing a Friends Volunteer Spotlight in our spring newsletter. Uh this is gonna offer a chance to find out just what the Friends Volunteer does by pairing a prospective volunteer with a regular Friends Volunteer. For an hour or two to see what their job is. They do so much, and I think this is a great idea, so they can kind of get an idea of all that's available and what's out there. And so they wanted me to say thank you to Beth Lantier and our own Karen for that suggestion.
That's a great idea.
Well, you know, they were mentioning that getting people to come in and work the different things, and then I said, well, maybe. Asking them to come in for four hours, it's a little much if you've never done it before.
Okay, um adult services, uh we had uh T L N put on an Adult Services Performer Showcase. I, Mary Lou attended that. Mary Lou is doing a great job. She is already booking, she's already booked about four concerts for the summer. Uh and we're gonna be tying in, once those are booked, we're gonna be tying in food trucks, which will make it easier for us to get the food trucks if we can say. You're appearing with a concert, so, okay. Uh see, again, we helped with the three D printer, we're gonna be launching our three D pens soon, we're working on the scanner. And uh youth, our crochet club is, wow, crazy popular. That is just really crazy popular.
If you have not in my car. If you, I do, some yarn and some, and some Christmas. Honestly, if you have not been in here during that, it's amazing. The garage is full.
Really?
And I'm usually doing tail wag and tutors at the same time, and the the youth area over here, we call it the garage, it is full, and those kids are. So excited. It's very cool.
That's wonderful.
And they're all ages. I'm I'm always shocked when I see it. I'm like, hmm, it's a good thing.
Yeah, they're gonna start making animals too. Um so they were also able to purchase uh some wonder books for the end of the year. Uh these are those chapter books with an audio book feature.
Those are so nice.
Some Spanish titles, uh we have uh kids in Spanish immersion classes, so they're looking for those. Um getting some summer reading ideas, winter reading bingo, starting January eighth, and I know the kids are excited to see the prize machine come back. Item two, there's just something about turning that thing and getting something. Um we're gonna be getting the Storytime kits ready, uh the Hope, and I'm just, I'm just gonna say the Hope, because I don't want to put any pressure on any staff. Um but that we would be able to launch those in March for March's Reading Month, so that is our hope on that one. Uh we have, uh Mallory has uh finished up the Reader's Advisory Binders, and so if you need to come in, you need some sort of recommendation. This is by age, so that's a wonderful thing to have.
Nice.
And um we are finally gonna be, we're finally going to have the we you. Um hooked up to the TV in the teen room for you, so very excited about that. Two trees were air seeded. Um by retreat, so we're moving along each year, just a few more trees. Um I updated our bomb threat procedures and placed them near all phones and all emergency manuals and sent them to all staff. Uh this is just something that we we did have, I did want to make our staff a little more fully aware of that, um and have that. Ready, the key with that is to have it right near the box. Very important. Um we're celebrating Cheryl working with us for seven years. Big thank you to Emily for the sign of the January through April print newsletter, which should be on your doorstep any day now.
As the president, I always used to get a pre copy to add, to see if there was anything. I I would guess the whole board would just like to see it before it goes out in the future. I don't know if our board meetings align with that, or if you wanna send an email saying, hey, here's a advance look. Come in and see it if you want, kind of thing, not that we're gonna say, oh, take that out, change that, make that purple, it's just that. You know, everything that we expected it to talk about is in there.
Advanced view.
The preview.
Preview. Coming soon. Um, okay, and then um, so we, one day I was uh walking towards the back kitchen. And uh staff member Kathleen, she stopped me, and she said, you know, the second door coming into the staff area could really use a. Um doorstop, right now it just had one of those little wooden things, and it would slide um in our T L N delivery, our.
When you come in that back door.
The back door, the second door.
Second door.
Okay, she said that could really use a doorstop, and I said, we're on it. So I went and talked to Nate, our facilities, and he got her done really quick, and our vendors are very happy.
Door that you kick down, that kind of thing.
And this one is the nicer one, it doesn't, you won't, if you're in the summertime where you have the, you know, open toe shoes, you won't hurt your toe, because it's got the little release. Um yeah, so statistics. Um looking good, the only thing I would call your attention to is our I T, um we're having our I T. Consultant look into, we're having a little issue with um reporting. On our public computers, so we are um. We're just waiting for him to make a connection with ambition here to correct that. And we'll get updated.
Is, is it in here or no?
It is, it says on the bottom, it says um system. This is reporting an error.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
Oh, so we're working.
I just wanted, you know, I had been in here three times in the last two weeks. And two of the three times, I could not get on an adult computer. They were full. They talked about how we didn't need anymore, that six was enough.
Right.
Something to watch. More, you know, there's a little, there's some space there, I think we could do that.
I have been amazed by how many have been used.
Yeah, I hadn't wait.
Really? Not here, because my printer's broken. So, uh while we're talking about little things like that, I had a couple people ask me, why? Who was it that was asking? And I know this isn't us, it's T L N. So I'm sort of looking at Amy too. Why, when we type something in the library search, it doesn't have a fuzzy search? You have to type it in exactly like it is, you know, so you can't start a fuzzy search and it goes through and tries to tell you what the things you. Just like most things have a fuzzy search, why doesn't T L N have a fuzzy search when you're searching for a library book?
It's Carl.
Carl, is that what it is?
Well, you're a very good example. Firekeeper's daughter. Depending on how you type it in, you get absolutely nothing. Matter of fact, if you type for a while, if you typed it in properly, it showed that only four libraries had that book. And I could not believe that only four libraries had.
And that is what happened to me, somebody in my neighborhood, I was walking and they actually walked over with their phone and said, look, I can't get this. And they were spelling it, like, they didn't have like, um, I don't remember, like, two letters at the end of a of a of a word, and I'm like. And I type it in, I'm like, what's right here? And then I realized they didn't quite match, nothing. I don't have a fuzzy search on this silly thing.
Yeah, Carl, you're, you'll hear all sorts of complaints from all people, all librarians.
But is there anything, I mean, do they, do they accept feedback? Do people complain to them all the time? You know, because. Really, I mean, at this day and age, a fuzzy search is not hard to implement.
You would think. You would definitely think, but I can tell you from dealing with Carl since.
I just wonder how, I just wonder how often people bring it up to them that. It's, you know, that you have patrons that are complaining.
Yeah, we do. I will add it to the list and pass it on.
It it's just, you know, I retired from that kind of business and fuzzy searches are easy to implement. And I'm like, what is going on here?
Yeah.
That we don't have it at the library at this day and age. And I realized it's not up. And I had to explain that to my neighbors that didn't believe me, they didn't care. And the other thing that I wanted, and you were talking about the bomb threat thing, when we go through, do we have a policy, you know, I'm. I get on, I you know, I know I get on something like a dog with a bone, when I, you know, I'm sort of concerned about us not having a generator yet, right? So we know we're gonna look for the, a generator, like, we're gonna investigate that in twenty twenty four. Do we have a policy, do we have a policy for the staff in place for when we don't have power? In the building, what needs to happen if we don't have power here?
We, it's more procedure than policy.
Well, it doesn't need to be policy, right? I should have said procedure, but I'm like, what is it? Because I started thinking about this whole, we were talking about this saltwater fish tank, and I might.
There is partial procedure, but I'm sorry, there's partial policy, but there's more procedure. So yes, there's like, who calls who, what's this, the timing, um who needs to be a um. Who needs to be told a, yes.
Because my, my, uh my biggest concern is that we lose power and we lose, um and we actually, um. And it's really cold, and we lose, you know, we have a water break. You know, do we have a procedure that somebody's here to, and knows how to shut the water on?
We do, uh in fact, managers have all been shown where the major water. And that's because I had an experience with that.
And I thought you had, and you know, my worrywart personality, I'm like.
It's actually labeled.
Okay.
And there.
All right.
Yes, so if some toilet goes or something like that, we know to turn that off on that one. Yes.
Okay. Okay, thank you. So that's it for your report, April?
That is it, I'm just looking at everything, yes.
They do, they look bad.
Well, I mean, it's November, obviously, we're closed.
Do you think the window's gonna, news is gonna pick up?
The way out.
The window use?
Have we got anything on the website to say?
Yeah, there's. I've seen it.
There is, it's on, it's just not on the front anymore.
Okay.
Yeah, um it's went down, November, a lot of, quite a few numbers went down in November again, students are, not only the Thanksgiving closure and the. Um the in-service state closure, so I expected November to be down a little.
I think you could really do like a re-promotion of the winner.
With the weather.
I I think that we'll see a big pickup in the winter. Right now, we really haven't had bad weather.
I usually.
You did.
I did.
And?
It it stunned me that it was a little bit dark to begin with, there's like no. Uh when I, when I pulled up, I thought, huh, is it even open? Thought that I had, and I knew it was, but uh yeah, the lighting seemed like.
That's pretty, yeah.
I mean, even if we had like a.
Open sign.
Like, like, yeah, an open sign or uh like LED lights in the window, like the Christmas fairy light, anything. Something to indicate that there's some activity there, that it's not just a dead window.
Maybe we should change the lighting here, so it doesn't go automatically off, we'd have to turn it off.
An open sign's not a bad idea.
Yeah, that's true.
Don't make it like one of China House, which now says Chia. Oh, it says, it's a China house, it just says Chia. Originally just said China, I know it's just.
Up at the top of the hill, that one?
Uh we're at uh Nordic Drive.
Yeah. Yeah.
It just says Chia. Every time I drive by, I think that exact thing.
Okay.
Okay.
So if I move on to committee reports, I'm gonna say the finance committee. There's just three of us now.
Which we need another person.
And we're going to talk about. Committees in the January meeting. Okay, think about which committees you passionately want to support. And also any um non-board members that you think would be good additions.
Think we need to.
Particularly, we want to have a building committee.
Right.
And would like to have somebody with some kind of experience, like someone who's a general contractor or someone.
I have somebody in mind.
Okay.
Architect.
An architect, anything like that.
A civil engineering architect.
There you go. And just. So. Are there any other committees you see like, hey, this would really be a great fit? Bring it up then.
I think bringing some people that are experts out um from that community into our committee meetings is is an excellent idea. Jen.
Okay.
Absolutely. We have some things that, you know, we're not experts on, and I think that it would be really great to, that can contribute in that way to the library.
Okay.
So April, you'll make sure that's on the agenda, right?
Okay, okay. Move to January.
I would say. Strategic planning committee, we haven't met, are we debunked or?
It's not, I'm just only, the last thing I need to hear from um Review is that final look at that. Marketing. Remember, we.
Sent it a week ago or so.
Yeah, I swear, I remember you guys wanted me to move my name here, put this over there, went through all of that, and then I sent it for just one last. It is, I put the information on the website, but as far as printing it, I'm like, I'm not printing it until I get that last final word.
Okay, let me write a note.
But otherwise than that, we're, it kind of moves now to a board. Um issue, because you'll be seeing the reporting mechanism. You know.
They talked about.
I didn't like their dashboard. So I just made my own, I just took what we had take, what what we had, that portion of it, the implementation plan, and I just. Put things in.
To make it.
I haven't put, they're working on goals now, Steph, I'm working on goals or um action items. Um and then I'll bring probably a first draft with some of those rules on there. In January, so we can kind of take a look at it and say, are you comfortable with this? This is, do you like the way it looks?
I would love a change.
I would love a nice spreadsheet.
That's what it is, okay. It it's the spreadsheet, it's implementation plan. It, it's the spreadsheet, it's implementation plan that we, you looked at and approved.
Okay, so check my email or something from you.
Yes.
On a final look.
Yeah, I can just resend it to.
I don't know, I have seven thousand things in my email. I keep thinking I'm gonna just watch a Lions game and. Get rid of them. Final look. Okay, and then I see some things in here for policy committee?
Yes.
Anything that needs to be reviewed or?
Yes, that's under new business.
Okay, do we have those documents?
Yeah, they're in there. I read them online.
So let's talk about that under new business, you're saying?
Yeah, I, I think just that's not the one before you had mentioned that, if, if we're bringing a new policy, put it under new business, but anything with like. Reviewing CDs or things like that, put under treasures. So I have a note.
Okay.
You're good with that. Um, yeah, so our new policy, pop things, policy committee, we have a drive-up window policy, so. We are presenting this board. So what do you think?
I think this is making the customer go jump through too many hoops.
That's what I think.
To pick something up, how difficult is it if the person were to come up and ring the bell and then ask for?
I, I actually agree with you Karen. Because like when I used to live in West Bloomfield, I would be able to drive up to say, I have, um, books to pick up, uh, under my name, and be able to pick them up.
But it's not really saying that you can't do that.
But that, it does say that on our website.
I mean, we're encouraging people to call just because otherwise if. Then we're coming back, we don't have a person manning it, if we had a person manning it, that would be a little bit of a different story. But right now, we just, you have to come up, you're ringing the bell, someone's coming back there, you're, you're telling them what they want. Uh, if you would call ahead. You wouldn't wait as long because the item would already be there. So it's just meaning you're gonna wait a little longer, it's not saying you can't do it.
See that it says I can, so it says that I need an appointment, I am more towards. Just.
You know, I'm out and about, and I realize I can stop at the library and pick up my book. But if I have to call and make an appointment, that means I have to stop in a parking lot. Make a call because I'm not due calling while driving and, you know.
And I think our website says that right now too, to call ahead. We do. And I do agree with Karen, it. That, you know, you're out and about and you're like.
I've got that book.
Especially, you know, I get alerted on my phone, oh.
As long as it takes you to walk from the drive-through. To the hold and back. I'm willing to wait that.
You're willing to wait that.
Let me just check on that, is what, you know, I would say, oh, okay. I just say your last name or whatever and then.
First time that I picked my book up from the drive-through, I did not have an hour before closing time, so I decided to put it off the next day.
Yeah.
Then when I called the next day, she said, yeah, twenty minutes, half hour, that's all we need.
Okay.
So I could have stopped by that day, but I didn't, so was that a missed opportunity?
And I think that if you are calling, then you shouldn't be negotiating a time, the person you call should say that will be there. Intent, like if, if they're realizing they could do it now, that'll be there in ten minutes. I shouldn't have to give them a time that I'm gonna be there because once it's back there, it's back there, it's, I mean, up here.
Customer friendly, you don't go to McDonald's and say, hey, in five minutes, I'm gonna stop by for a quarter pounder.
Right, but, but like C, but C V S will say what time you need that.
Right.
What? C V S, if you have a prescription, they'll say what time you need that. As soon as possible, okay, be ready in fifteen minutes, or text you when it's ready, or it'll be an hour. So I think that's not.
I, 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 I don't like the pre-arranged by phone. Personally.
Okay, so how would you, I mean, I just want to make sure the staff are able to handle it. Especially since, like I said, they're not in there, so I just want to make sure.
I understand.
Yeah.
We don't have a whole lot of people using it, so I don't see it as being a problem until. It's at the point where there's fifteen people daily pulling up to that. Cause what we're trying to do is get people to use it, and I think we need to make it so easy that people start going. Yeah, you know what, I'd really like to just, as I'm driving home from work. Yeah.
Yeah, we don't wanna say anything negative to somebody that's using it that just did pull up. Say, you know, you really should have called, our policies, you should, you should have called.
And they wouldn't, that's not, that's not how they would handle, they would still do it, they know that if someone pulls up and they don't have an, they're still going to accommodate that.
Sure.
So it's, it's not that much.
Yeah, I'd like to get rid of this until we have five people in line waiting to pick up books, at which point. I would visit. Making an appointment, but.
Yeah, because when I, I used to live by West Acres, there was never anybody that was just standing there. He rang the bell.
I don't, yeah.
No, no, I, I used it like all the time, when I had my, my kids, I think I've told you, because if I went in the library, I couldn't get Samuel out. So, you know, if we had things on hold, I would just pull up and then you ring the bell and they come and say, say, okay, I have holds for Newton, and then they would go get them. Okay. And, you know, and I never thought about them having to walk away, right? They have to walk away to go with the, the first, right? Right.
All right, do you want me to come back with something else? Do you want that one just? Come back next month with something else?
I think that that.
I just get rid of the third paragraph altogether.
I do like that if they have, if they realize they have more than, you know, it's gonna take more than five minutes to. To be going through transactions, they really should probably come inside.
And that does kind of help with, if you do remove the paragraph before, it's still kind of saying to them, all right. We're not here to. You know, go find the book, we're here to go get something that's already on.
Because they're holds, right?
Right.
Yeah, I, I think actually like you moved that paragraph to the bottom and said that people calling for holds are, you're welcome to call. To pre-arrange your pickup time. There may be somebody that wants to, I certainly might do it myself, I think about how I would use it.
Yeah, because if you, you know you're gonna be in a hurry, then you know that that book is there. So I do have to say that the last time I did it, and they came and I said, yes, I have a book on hold that I called about. They started to leave and I go, it's on the shelf.
So we could say whole, um, whole pickup, it can be pre-arranged.
Yeah.
Instead of must be pre-arranged, we could say can be pre-arranged by phoning the library and determine mutually.
Instead of giving, instead of limiting it, it adds another avenue besides what you've already got.
Yeah, and I, and I agree, Eric, we could put that at the bottom.
Okay, so move that to the bottom, change must can.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I think that works.
Do you want me to bring it back, or are you good with the changes as mentioned?
I'm good.
I'm good.
We don't need to vote.
Do they have to have hours notice in advance or?
It says, uh, well, it's agreed upon pickup time must have or.
I think it would.
Most of the time it's gonna be mutually.
Yeah, I would get rid of that little end part, so it doesn't say in hours notice, because really, it should only be. You know, there's enough people, it'll be picked up and, you know, the answer should be, it'll be waiting for you. You know.
So in April, you caught the word split between mutually and agreed. Just needs to.
Yeah. Yeah.
Sometimes. Finally give up and go. And just on a kind of other thing, I think we need to come up with some ways to get people to use it, you know, like if the. Children's section puts together bags of five picture books and come get a surprise package. And you drive through and you go, yeah, we'd like to pick up a, a bunch, because they did that during. I don't, I think they need to come in for the craft projects because they run out, and to make it too easy for them would be.
I absolutely agree.
Well, during COVID, I would call and ask for ten books. I would just call, you know. Cause like we were doing the, you know, we were closed, and I said, just pick any ten, I just need ten picture books, you know? It doesn't really matter, and then, you know, actually I'd have about five that I had to, you know, I need these five. And then could you throw in ten more, probably in two days, um, but, and I think that would get people through to kind of get it.
There's some ideas.
Yeah.
Well, the Akron Public Library during the first part of the pandemic when I was working with them, the Akron Public Library would. Like if you had a science fiction book, for example, they had the option that you could actually pick a grab bag of another book in the genre. And they put it in a brown paper bag.
You know, like make that the only way you could pick those up or something, you could do it other way, it could be in the library.
One thing I want to do is that it helps with books that weren't circulating.
Yes. Yeah, I end up with a book that I would never read, if, you know, and I'm gonna read it because I got it in that brown paper, that blind date. In February, they did Blind Date, yes.
Fun, yeah. I'll see about ideas to promote the drive up. But thank you. Okay. Okay, the next one is the, um, so petitions. So I had, um, someone had come to me and was asking a question about wanting to do a petition, and it made me look at our petitions. Policy. Um, and I thought it needed, um. A little more to it, and so took it to policy committee. And we kind of at first looked at it and they were like, oh, you know what?
No, is this the original?
That's the original. And then, that's the new.
Okay.
And then we, I took it to the attorney, and the attorney actually, what, what we had in this one was what kind of a boilerplate of what the attorney says. The new one that I have here to do, so with a little bit of small tweaking from policy committee, we present this one to you.
The one that's in red.
The one that's in red, yes.
And Eric, you did a nice job on reviewing it, thank you.
Yeah, this is. This really covers.
Well, it was news to me in the conversation that you can't really prohibit people on the property, prohibit them from being inside and doing it. But from being on the property, they're allowed to by law.
Which I didn't realize was a law either.
Right, as long as they don't block ingress or egress, they can't stop you from coming in the building, they can't stop him leaving. But they can still be on the property.
Is there any distance from the door?
Uh, it's a hundred feet.
Hundred. Okay, I saw, I knew I.
Yeah, it's a hundred feet.
Amflaturin. What is your profession? Well, I'm a pan. We don't ever have. We have not yet ever had.
Voting?
Yeah.
No. Just so you know, uh, with the new vote and it's coming next year, I, I did have a delegation of, um. Local clerks come, including Oakland County, because they did look at the building to see if we could be considered for that two-week time period. One of the things that kind of knocked us off the list was the generator. Because they not having a generator. And.
We really don't want to be.
Yeah, is that a current kind?
I know.
It was also ours, we're not quite. It was more than just the generator, but, um.
Early.
Yes, right, I mean, cause ideally, this is a perfect, because. It's, it was six thirty AM, you lock that, they come in here, they set it all up, they're, they can come, milk and go out. You could have library card signup, I was very excited, but as soon as I heard generate, like. No, that's not, but it was more than that, that was the first thing.
But our hours would.
Hours were second, yeah.
But we could.
Yeah, it was having, it was getting staffing and. A few things.
That's interesting, I'd never noticed that where I hope that anybody.
But you have to have, you have to have the building, you have to have the building accessible. So.
So someone is coming in open the doors.
And there has to be somebody that.
I've done voting, and so, um, there's a janitor there. That usually takes care of that.
Got it, okay, that I don't see.
Well, that makes sense.
Okay.
It makes a lot of sense.
Okay, there's gonna be some sort of combined voting, um, of, like Highland and White Lake in one area, so it's. That's why it's. Anyways.
This looks very good.
Yeah, we also changed the one line about the hours of libraries open to prevent people from. Being out there when there are people leaving that work on staff.
Right.
Oh, yeah.
So we want to make sure when the library closes, they're off the property.
I hadn't, I wouldn't have thought of that.
Man, you gotta be aware of that.
Cause you would just assume that they would only be there when places open.
But then again, you think about, there are people that distribute pamphlets that are aggressive. And could be that way to patients and their. Employees. Pamphleteers, you gotta watch out for the pamphlet.
I, I, yeah, I need to know if you. So we need to know, we need to vote on both of those, right?
Yes.
Okay. So I, um. All right, I'm waiting for Karen to be ready.
I'm ready.
Okay, I make a motion to approve the, um, special services and special collections drive-up policy. To.
I.
I.
Yes.
As, um, as modified.
All in favor?
Karen, feel free to make a motion or second.
I just, I thought I'd just sit back.
We have the policy of the, uh, the first meeting, she has to, she has to do the motion to adjourn.
Yeah, I feel like what?
I can handle that one.
On the heels of that, I'll make a motion to approve the policy listed as one H campaigning, petitioning, interviewing and similar activities. As submitted to the boards.
Second. Second. All in favor?
Okay. My budget amendment, student.
Not that, not that, okay, there we go.
So these are some of the amendments that, um. You'll notice in the budget. The are accounted for, uh, in. So, let me explain this.
This is this year's budget.
Yes, this is twenty twenty-three. Um, so these are things, as for instance, strategic planning costs, originally budgeted for in nine eighty-four. That was a carryover from twenty twenty-two, I left it in nine eighty-four. Um, but it should technically come out of eight oh one professional contracted services. Thus for our accountant, it is, and so you'll see that eight oh one right now is. Way higher than it should be, and so we need to officially move. Said funds, I would need to lower nine eighty-four by set amount and raise eight oh one by set amount. Same thing for all of these other ones.
And you need to do that before the end of the year. Okay, I looked through this and.
I wanted to make it as clear as possible.
It's very clear.
Okay. Because as of right now, when I look at my quick box, I'm like, I hate looking at it because it's not accurate.
Yeah, this made sense.
Yeah. And this is just reallocating funds by number, it's nothing with the bat one saying at the end of the year.
There's nothing yet to do, yeah, as soon as I get the okay that this is officially okay, I let Joe know, Joe goes in.
And Joe recommended these are what's. We did this last year too.
Yes, okay.
There's just a few things that need to be moved to the right categories as, as, as those category descriptions are changed.
Right, and that's why in twenty twenty-four, I really tried hard with the budget to make sure that things were in the correct. Thing already, so we will have a lot less of this to track and.
Then you look at those percentages and you're like.
What is this?
Yes, yes.
Yeah, okay.
Okay, do we need to approve?
Um, I make a motion to approve the twenty twenty-three budget and amendments as presented, second.
Uh, moving on to old business. I think we should probably have a special meeting to talk about. I mean, are you all?
Yeah, but do we really need to?
I just, my opinion is we should just move forward with being opted out, but in the future.
Well, there's a technicality here. We already are opted out.
I know.
Cause we have to opt in, but, but we have a very, very, very small mileage that we officially have to opt out. And it's, and it's in our lawyer, it's in our, in the legal brief that we had the lawyer, right?
Oh, I don't know anything about.
It's in your November, it was in your November package? It's in your November, it was in your November package. Okay, so you, maybe um, you could send that out again, and but um. And I, and I understand the appeal. From, from, from the township, and I don't blame them, however, I think it's a derelict duty on our behalf. To not follow the law and to opt.
That we could um, I'm looking for it.
But there is a small.
That we can limit it.
Um, portion of our um, millage um, that. We technically um, have to opt out. And it's very, it's a, it's a smallest village that we have, and it's the original village that started the library, um, and I took that to Claire. Hmm, I don't remember how many months ago, when I first understood this was gonna happen, I, I took some questions to Claire. And she, and I think we had, we had all of that documentation in another, in another board meeting. But Claire basically said, you know, the same thing that I'm saying is we're remiss in our duties and, and we're, and we're really derelict of our duties. As a library board to um, opt in when it's very specifically like schools and libraries are um. Automatically exempt from this because, like you said, we have really, really small budgets. And when people pass a millage for a library, those, those monies are meant for library funding. And they're not meant for development, and that's why in two thousand seventeen, this, the state actually, um, you know, passed this bill. And I think the bill is called, it's um. Act MLC one twenty five dot forty six eighteen, any millage for library purposes that was approved and levered, levied after January first twenty seventeen. Is automatically exempt from captured by the CIA.
Okay.
Okay, but we have a small millage that was before that, um, so. And I actually, I'm, I'm, I'm remiss in saying how much money that comes to, so you know, we'd have to. We have to say that we want, we were willing to opt, we were willing to accept that. Or we have to opt out, and um, we have a document that, that states all of that. So, um, I don't, we can have a special meeting, I mean, Rich is in here.
I'll speak my mind, I'm also in favor of opting out, or letting it opt out automatically, for whatever we can, because I think that. Putting it on the hope that tax revenues increase to the point that we saw benefit of it is a bit of a stretch.
Yeah, that's why I asked him to go back.
Yeah.
Last ten years and their projected ten.
Yeah, well, the comment that he made about like, why this is happening, he's like, well, it was, the, the reason why is because the legislation, no, the legislation was because of the reason why. So, let's not get that out.
And it very, it's very concerning if you look at the, the one document, at, at the very end of it, it has numbers and they project us. Um, over the life of this TIF, contributing tax money of, and this is, and he said it's conservative.
Right.
So, and it's three quarters of a million dollars.
Right.
And in, you know, those last few years, it's in the fifty five, fifty, fifty thousand to sixty thousand, we probably won't be on this board at that time. And I think that we are burdening a future board by opting in, and, and I think it's very, very unfair.
Yeah.
I do not want to opt in based on a percentage.
Yeah. The part that I didn't realize also is how little they accrue in the first couple of years.
Yeah, it's.
During this time, none of those projects actually can begin. So, none of those things.
Notice when you look at that amount, the total amount, which yet. There was in for a while, but when you divide that up, the total. By the twenty years, they are asking us to get rid of one full time staff member for twenty years.
We, we don't want to have a choice.
And we don't, you know, we're stretched.
I was not, so if you look at the very.
Wanted to give them hope.
Yes.
Yeah. Because, I know, but because you know, in the future, maybe they get a grant for all these paths. And they need another ten to do it or whatever, and it benefits us, and we can, if we know enough in advance, we can budget a line item for that. So it does support. Those.
Their appendix three, which is their very last page of this document, and it's the same document that they gave us previously. It shows how they anticipate um, the estimated capture for CIA. And for the, for the library, we're right in the center, and it says captured library minus the debt. And over that twenty year period, seven hundred and forty nine thousand, eight hundred and forty four dollars. Um, and it, you know, it's very minimal, while, you know, the people that are sitting here are probably on the board. But as you look over this, it, it's incrementally, you know, goes up over and over and over again, and Mike, like you said. You know, we're looking at, if, if we opt into this, we're reducing staff, we already have a staff problem. We don't, and we wouldn't have any way around it, we would have to do that.
Yeah.
We don't, you know, we're looking at different ways that we can improve staff, and I understand that we want the, um, you know, good neighbors. Absolutely, um, but there was a reason why this bill went through when it did in two thousand seventeen. Is because most libraries have a very limited budget and um. And I, I just feel like.
This in the letter that we've written already.
I can give you a copy.
But. The letter that's going to go to them.
And it has to be delivered. Yeah, it was in, do you have, were you here in November? It's in your November packet. Okay, so anyway, um. I know that um, it was mentioned that, you know, while the water's done, but no, we contributed.
Yeah, I am not.
Okay.
I'm sorry, but no.
We.
We contributed before you guys.
We didn't have, we didn't. Exactly. That water line didn't need to cost us three hundred thousand dollars.
It did not.
Because we ended up doing that.
They let's pay it.
Right.
Because they said we were the first people into the complex, and you're doing it for everybody else.
So we did that, and like they're saying, we, and I'm like, I'm not. We also left them that, the old library building, and which those two things are well worth more. Than what they're asking to contribute over twenty years, and I just feel like that, that um, you know. We've, we've already contributed to the, the development, and I think the development is a great idea. But I think that we're remiss, uh, our, um, you know, our charter is that we're fiscally responsible. For um, the taxpayer dollars towards the library, and I just feel like um, that. That we, we have to follow that, what our charter says.
It's just like when they came over and talked to us. About this great new building they wanted to have and have us in with it, and we told them, no, we can't do that. Because that's not what the money was raised for, the money was raised for the library, not a joint building.
Back funds for a lot for during the time you do.
That's what, you know, that's what they wanted us to do, and we just told Rick, no, I'm, you know.
And we can only, we can only make a decision for the year twenty twenty four because elections are coming up, so we do not know. If we're back, you know, if we are the, the future boards, that's something that each. Board needs to decide, and we cannot, like it's been said, we cannot make the decision for the board from twenty forty three.
Right.
Right.
Well, I'm pretty sure I won't be around.
I'm not, I'm not advocating that we even come to an agreement. I'm just saying that we say when you've got something that fits, we'll look at it.
Right, we, we need to vote on this, we, because we do need to vote on it. And we need to vote on it and have this delivered by January twenty fifth. Okay, so um, you know, if everybody could read um, this, this document. It has to be, um, we have to vote and have the yays and nays listed. And it has to then be signed by um, our secretary, and it has to be delivered to the clerk's office.
Okay.
Okay.
I would like to give Carrie time to read it.
Absolutely, and Carrie does not have a copy of this.
Yeah, okay, and so I would, I would think we could. But maybe have a special meeting. Because the twenty fourth is awful close to the twenty.
Getting it right, signed and delivered.
Yeah. So if you got, you guys want to wait, I mean, it's only the thirteenth.
I'm going from the fifth to the fourteenth of January.
From the fifteenth.
Fourteenth of Jan.
I may be in Hawaii.
When are you?
Good for you.
The fifth of January.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Okay.
Just in case that sets the tone for the month.
So maybe we should do it next week? Or, I mean.
Um, what's people's week look like be, the, between Christmas and New Year's? Like twenty six, twenty seven, twenty eight.
I got a lot of dots on my calendar.
I'm off that only.
You're off that week?
Yeah, I don't have my work schedule yet, so I'll just make it work.
I'm, I mean, I'm available the twenty sixth or the twenty eighth, and um, Carrie, are, is the school, are you working that week?
Um, because I'm on a research project and I'm part time, I will be working, but I have tremendous flexibility in terms of.
So we could actually meet maybe during the day.
I can't do the twenty sixth, because my, I gotta take my daughter to the airport.
But maybe, maybe Thursday, the twenty eighth, we could actually meet during the day. Can we check on that? Because Rich won't be, Rich probably won't be working either.
I can, I think so far so.
I can't really stick to him, but.
Yeah, that could work for me.
Which is twenty eighth.
Yeah, it's Thursday, the twenty.
I'm gonna get through my.
But like I said, I don't have work scheduling yet.
There's nothing on our calendar.
Okay, so that could.
Well, you know, hold on a second. Make sure I'm logged in, okay, yeah, no, no. There's nothing on the twenty eighth, and I think that's on purpose because just with staffing, it's hard to. And people really.
Pressure. Yeah, twenty twenty three.
Okay. Yeah, so timing wise, yeah, I mean, what time do you want to do it?
Do you want to do the morning, or do you want?
I can do morning, my only time I can't do it is from two to three.
Let's do it then, no. I mean, you want to meet like ten o'clock?
Or the live, I, I mean, I'm here usually at eight thirty, so I mean.
I'm better ten, nine, nine.
Yeah, okay, so why don't we, why don't we do that, can we, if we, can we book at ten? And then if which, this gives Rich sometimes, and being that, you know, the, the, the work that he does, it's possibility he'd be available. Right, so. And then, and then we can have a good discussion about it. We can review what we've had the law, lawyer draw, draw.
Okay, so ten AM, on the twenty. Do you want me to, um, you want me to hear from Rich first, just to double check?
Well, I'm just texting him right now.
Okay.
He might not answer at this moment.
It's okay. I'll just put a placehold around the calendar.
Thank you, I, because it works.
Thursday, the twenty eighth, at ten AM, to have a special meeting regarding the T I F C. AI, whatever it is.
Yeah, I guess I can't really call it a downtown development, I keep calling it.
And then you and I could present the letter to the secretary.
Who has to?
It has to go to the clerk. Oh, to the clerk across the street.
That's a great email. Yeah, alrighty, I thought we were going to, oh, there that is.
Okay. Okay, okay.
So, let's see if we can get done by nine.
Yeah.
Okay, the, so we just talked about that, and there's a meeting. Alrighty. Well, I wrote eleven twenty eight, twelve, twenty eight, okay. Um, this is the month we usually vote on our slate of officers for next year. Um, I talked to Rich, and he is happy to be vice president. Or treasurer or secretary. Or trustee, he said.
He said treasurer?
He did not, yes, he did not want to be the president, I said, okay. So. I know, but it's too soon for that. Okay, so. Um, I am willing to continue as president unless someone has a burning desire to fill that spot. Eric's not looking up, so I don't see her.
I've considered it, but if you're happy to do it.
I'll do it.
Okay, so I will make a motion then to, um, I, I nominate. Um, Jen Schultz for president and Rich McGlue for vice president. And can I keep, will you keep treasurer?
I will keep treasurer, thank you.
Okay, so we have.
I'd like to turn it over at some point.
But not. Until twenty thirty.
No, I don't plan to do it. And Karen, I had heard you would be happy to be secretary.
I will, yes.
So then I nominate Ki, um, Karen as secretary. Okay.
Okay.
Which leaves Eric and Carrie.
As trustees.
Yeah, as trustees, Carrie, what is the official spelling of your name?
Um, do you want the legal?
Whatever you want, just C A R I E.
C A one R I B. Okay. So. There we are. All right.
And, and actually, it's in our, in our folder this month, everybody.
Oh, yeah, I saw.
Yeah.
I only looked at mine to see if it was.
Yeah, that's what we need you to do, we need you to check whether it's not, if any state.
I'm, I'm good.
You're good?
Yeah.
I work for Oakland University.
I work on research. We're not allowed to move ahead to that, we're still on election.
Yeah, that's really on the list.
Now it's coming twelve.
It doesn't matter, we've, we've got to get through lunch. When did you make an official?
We need to make that.
Okay, but nobody nominated. So I make a motion.
What?
That then, that the officers, the slate of officers, slate of officers running twenty four. Okay, I make a motion for the slate of officers for twenty twenty four be president. Jennifer Schultz, vice president, Rich McGlue, treasurer, Gwendolyn Newton. Secretary Karen White.
That is correct.
I'm second that motion.
Thank you. And did by, there we go.
And the votes are. Are we voting? Uh, do you want to vote? Yes, no?
I'm voting yay.
Yay. Yes.
Or yeah?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, okay.
I would like to just table the uh. Committee meetings till next month. So, yeah, we talked about that a little earlier.
Yes, okay.
I know it's policy and building.
Got everything?
Where would you put, uh, I guess I can ask this government's meeting, so that brings us to the end of our agenda.
We need to look at, make sure everybody's context is correct.
Plus, not on the agenda.
Yeah, we don't.
Mine is correct.
I'm sure mine is correct.
I don't know about Rich, but it.